...in our town. By providing a free, family-friendly venue for entertainment for a few hours, we bring over 100 people spending money in our community each month. The revenue does not benefit only Open Space, but provides venue to the entire economics of our town. I have included the signatures, comments, they're very small, I'm sorry, the i dot map, the speech, and a list of other towns that closed their streets for multiple events, and more in the packets I handed out to you. Thank you for your time, and thank you everyone who came today to support this cause. I hope we can come to an agreement today and let Third Fridays stay on Madison Street.
Thank you, Amanda. Anyone else want to speak?
Hello, my name is Sheena Dickens, and I am a photographer and artist who sets up frequently at Third Fridays. I just wanted to take a brief comment to say that we did do Third Friday on the Jordan Block one month, and that month I sold zero items. Every other time I had sold most of my artwork at Third Friday, the one I won pays for my house rent, my scooter rent, and my car payment just from Third Friday. Thank you.
My name is Laura Barrero. I'm a transplant to the area. My husband and I chose to do this area because of how much we liked it. We were originally from the Yorkville area, and while we lived there, we participated in Aurora's, they have Third Friday events. I contacted some of my friends who participated in those events and got permission to share some information from them. I'd like to share first, just a little snippet of something that somebody wrote. Her name is Marissa Amoni, and she said, "Go ahead, be calendar, I'll wait. Now block out the first Friday of every month for First Fridays in downtown Aurora. First Fridays wake up sleepy and artist downtowns all over the nation. First Fridays are full of art, people, food, and more." And now First Fridays are downtown Aurora. She goes on to discuss how a handful of businesses were participating and a handful of vendors for the first event, and they were really looking forward to the next one. That was 10 years ago. The city of Aurora saw the potential that First Fridays had and ran with it. It's been going on for a decade, and it is a staple of the community. The city itself hopes in organizing the event because it has done so much for their businesses. A personal friend of mine, Emily Boe, owns the Zen Loft in Aurora, and she has allowed me to share this information with you. She owns, the Zen Loft is a wellness center, and it is based on community group organizations. So yoga classes, dance classes, therapy groups, everything that's in person. When the pandemic hit, it took a huge toll on her business, and she nearly had to close. First Fridays, because they were outdoor events, became her sole source of income and helped her to maintain her business and keep it open, so that it's still open today despite those challenges that she faced. I think putting blockades in front of this opportunity would do a disservice for our town, for our area, and you're missing out on some incredible potential if you don't see the value that this organization, that these people, that these artists have. And I hope that you consider what good it can do for all of us. Thank you.
I'm short.
My name is Dylan. I do not own the bookstore. I manage the bookstore, despite what people think. I just wanted to speak from a merchant's point of view that there are many, many different events that come in and out of town. And Third Friday has been the one that I'd say the most merchants come together. You see themed drinks, you see themed dinner items. You see the most, I'd say, businesses staying open and really coming together. There are events for all different types of things. But for example, when the car show comes to town, the only business we get that night, and we stay open until night, is people coming in to ask if they can use the restroom. And a lot of people, it's very specific to car people. When Third Friday comes around, we get tons of people coming in from Chicago. We get people that come in from out of state, and they have returned just for Third Friday. And our sales are always great that night. We get people who say they came in for Third Friday. They've never been to Ottawa before, but they heard about Third Friday from their friends. And I just want to say, as a merchant, I look forward to always signing up for it. I've seen more businesses sign up after the first one, and it continues to grow. We look forward to it. And I do think that the fact that it's on the street is very, very important. As someone who's from Chicago and is used to street festivals, it being on an actual street is what makes it so important and gives it the charm that it has. If it was in the park, like so many other things were, it would be an entirely different event. And so I don't know if any other merchants would like to stand up or if they're even here, but I do think this one is very essential. I've never heard one complaint about it being on Madison Street. And for one Friday a month for just the summer, I think that, speaking from an economy sense, people will start to go to all the surrounding communities that have been doing it. I think it's really, really important for all of Ottawa that we keep it on Madison Street and keep it Third Fridays, just like every other city has theirs. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leslie Lombrink. I own Ottawa Community First Shop right across the street from Open Space Art Gallery. I opened my shop a year and a half ago on a fundraiser. My mission is to uplift the spirits of this community. Amanda has been someone that's inspired me from day one as someone who cares very deeply about this community as a whole. And she's gone to bat for artists, she's gone to bat for business owners. She cares. This event is a twofold event. She supports the artists, the artists support the event. My mission at my shop is probably sevenfold right now, but we have 25 local artists on display, and a lot of them are brand new. They've never displayed their art anywhere before. This is an opportunity for artists. Mafenna, please, your hand. Little Mafenna, she sold a painting out of my shop, and I think one day she would love to have her own booth at the Third Friday Art Market. Am I right? How inspiring is that? This is what it's about. There are people out there that are in their houses, they're isolated. They need things to do, they need to exert their creative energy and feel involved in something. So for me, someone that's across the street from Amanda, I see the Third Friday Art Market as a bridge that's brought our businesses together and has helped this community be lifted. There are hundreds and hundreds of smiling faces that leave the 200 blocks west of Madison because of Amanda and all she's created. Not only that, but I used to live in Lake County. I don't know if anybody's familiar with Long Island, Illinois. It's an adorable town. They have a bunch of festivals. They're lovely. You have Apple Fest, they have Strawberry Fest, they have Chocolate Fest. I started going to these. After you go to the third one, you realize they're all the same. It's the same vendors in the same spots, in the same parks. And after you've been to one, you've been to all of them. And so I stopped following because of that. And I feel that the Third Friday Art Market creates a very unique neighborhood, block party experience, one that draws people, like Dylan said, from out of town. I've had people tell me they've driven from Morris, they drove from Joliet. People are coming here because of the vibration that's created on this block, these artists, and this sense of community that's brought here is what it's about. And so I feel it's important to stay on Madison because we're sort of creating a little bit of an art district down there. And it's something very unique and very special, and it's very important for it to be preserved. I would also like to speak on some of the artists that started in my shop and because of Third Friday have now, they went from never displaying their art anywhere to now teaching classes, selling out workshops at Open Space Gallery. This is Margie. A year ago, she never had her art up anywhere. And now she's got her six workshops, she sold out just the other night at Open Space Gallery. She's a successful instructor now. Because of Third Friday, she stood out in front of my first shop and just did demo painting, and that was what helped her build the courage to then teach a class. And now she's going to have a wonderful retirement as a teacher. And so this is something that, it's an avenue for people that it wouldn't normally be there. And if we put it at the parks and everything is at the parks, people are going to stop coming, and it's going to lose its spirit. So I just wanted to speak to the spirit of the market and say thank you, Amanda, for creating it, because you've uplifted my spirit.
Does anyone else want to speak?
Just real quick. My name is Marge Myers. I'm the artist she was talking about. Just two points for me. I'm very, very concerned about the amount of traffic going up and down Columbus on the South Street with having either one of those, either Jordan Block or in Washington Park. A lot of kids, a lot of families come. We don't have semis going up and down Madison Street. So that concerns me with the heavy traffic there. And the other thing is, a lot of people, okay, the porta potties. I'm sorry, but porta potties are disgusting, and especially with all the COVID stuff going on. There's no good place to wash your hands like you should be doing. And the downtown businesses all have the bathrooms open. And Dylan mentioned that they come in just to use the bathroom. We have a lot of elderly people that come down there, a lot of kids that come down there. My grandson wouldn't go to the bathroom in Porta Potty. He was scared to death. And he was almost dead. He just, he wouldn't. So those are my two concerns, the traffic and the indoor plumbing, I guess. What do you mind? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, of course.
Remember, bar five minutes.
I'm a man. I have been a part of the downtown community for about 42 years where I got paid. And for the last 11, I've been a grandma. Yeah, because I thought 42 years was enough. So I think I have a little street cred on the festivals. I've been on side streets for my business the whole time. We were completely adored initially. It was always over here, over there, but it was never in here. And now I notice that they do close Court Street, which is where my business would have been. And that would have been a big benefit, and we had a nice bathroom, too. But it did bring people out and, you know, stuff like that. So I basically just came tonight to ask you to change your mind. It's easy to change your mind when you start hearing really good reasons why you should change your mind. And you know, I live on the West Side, the best side. And I use Madison Street to get home. And for one night a month, I can go down Jefferson. If I forget to go down Jefferson, I'll go down Main. Which is what happens usually. Oh, no, you know. But I just came tonight to support. I just love to see all the young artists. I fed my kids with my art, with my things in my booth for many years. We had friendship day in parks. So I know it means a lot to people to have a venue to sell their wares, to show theirs. And it's just so exciting to see the direction art is taking in our community. So please change your mind that, when is it, Third Friday? I get my numbers. Third Friday goes fourth. And thank you for hearing everybody.
My name is Lorena Mauth, and I'm an artist. I am from originally Princeton area. And three years ago, I found Ottawa. And I found Ottawa because of Amanda Weigand. She opened her doors to my art, and she gave me my first solo exhibit. And I've been paying attention to all of the things that she has contributed to this community. And she has embraced everybody. And I just wanted to point out that if you cannot see the value in what she has done, then there's something wrong. She has made connections here like I've never seen anywhere else in any other town. So I just would like for you to consider all of the benefits that you are getting on each of you personally and as a collective community to her hard efforts, her volunteerism, and her heart. Thank you.
My name is Lee, and I'm from La Grange. I've been here 17 years, going on 18. I just want to say that I've talked to a lot of people who say, "I never shop downtown Ottawa. I tend to get home before the stores are closed," until they found out about Third Friday. And they were able to come down, and a lot of the shops are open. They go to the bookstore, they go to the fancy mess of things. They are like, my eyes are open. I've lived here for 30 years, and I didn't know we had such great shops until I started coming down to Third Friday.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Check. I'm an artist, a jewelry artist with Perfect World. And I've been attending the markets with my business for three years since they started. The first year Amanda did this, we were crammed on little tiny tables in a handful of downtown businesses that would host us. It was rough. We did not have great attendance, but we started and kind of peppered it out. And it was very slow to start with. And I saw this as a benefit out of, one of the great things that happened with COVID was we couldn't be inside these businesses anymore. A lot of them were closed. Like, she announced to all of us that, "Hey, we can go outside." And we're like, "We got space. This is going to be fabulous." And it did, and it grew. And this last year, one thing that we really noticed, and if you were an artist that was there a lot, the first year that we were on the streets, we had a lot of people that would kind of wander in and be like, "What is this? What is this? Is this like every week? Is this every Friday? Like, what? No, this is Third Friday." This last year, the third year, the number of people that came down the street and asked, "Hey, what is this?" way, way, way down. We've increased the traffic. People recognize it. People know what it is. It's an amazing event for the artists. Amanda keeps our prices, like the cost to set up on the street is phenomenal compared to a lot of other markets. And the amount of people that we draw in in three short hours compared to markets that I have done in other towns that have been all-day events, she's charging a third, a quarter, or less than what they are, and it's an all-day market. And because of the size and because of the concentrated amount of time, I can make more, and I'm sure a lot of the other artists agree. You're making more than that three hours in town. I'm driving 10 minutes to get there than I would driving an hour and a half away to a town that's five times our size, and I'm paying five times as much. And I'd rather keep my business here because I'm making more. So that was, I think that's a huge deal. And I don't believe that that is going to happen. I've done other events in town at the other parks, and I agree with the other artists that said, the one week, the one Third Friday that we were down on the Jordan Block during the car show, it was bad. Our sales were not, and all the traffic down there, like everybody was out for the car show. So keeping our event separate from other events that are going on in town and keeping it different, keeping it on Madison Street, so it's not just, it's another one of the city things that's down in one of the parks. We don't want to look like everything else. We want it, it's, I don't know how else to describe it. It's a feeling. There's, like Leslie said, the vibrations that come out of this block. It's the connections that are made, everything. It's not something that you're going to find if we move it somewhere else. I want to show a hands, who's bent at Third Friday, as an artist or otherwise. So if you... So if you bend it, you know what it's like. And this last year was pretty amazing, and I really hate to see that go because if it gets moved somewhere else, I'm going to vet most of the artists or probably not going to make it anymore. Thank you for your time. Okay, Leslie, come ahead.
Hi, my name is Carson. You guys kind of inspired me to walk up here and say something. So I represent the culinary arts community, which is a different perspective. I've worked in the local culinary arts community in several different restaurants. And I'm going to tell you that the arts and restaurants, they go hand in hand. And having this event brings restaurants to the area. And it brings a reason to go out, eat, support the local restaurants. I work for Tangle Groups, and I'm telling you, because of COVID, it's really rough seeing all the places in Chicago banned and all the way that have closed down because of COVID. And working for Tangle Groups, I'm telling you that it made a difference having the arts community down there and more present because they want to support all the different businesses. So getting rid of this event and having a reason to go out and support not only just arts, but the culinary arts too, it's super important. And when you support your community, your community supports you too. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Sue Vanderwood. I am an owner of Rock Paper Scissors. And I just wanted to say, for 10 years, we've had our business downtown. And I agree 100% with everyone that's speaking here. It's a great event. We need the support through our town, and we need to be able to give back to our town in bringing this in with the people. It's just a great event. Yes, we can have it at the park, but I'm going to say, I'm in the middle in between, we're on the South Street, right between Deja Vu and Agratos. And it's actually nice to get the traffic when things are either at the Jordan Block or Madison instead of just at the park. Because typically, the people park there, and then that's where they stay. They don't wander and come into the downtown businesses. They don't walk the town. And anyways, and thanks, Amanda, because you're an awesome girl. All right, thank you. Of course, you guys can't see, there's like 20 people in the hallway that I'm representing, saying hello for them, too.
All right, anyone else?
I would be remiss if I didn't speak this evening. My name's Heather Persley. I just moved here a few years ago. The reason that I started a business in Ottawa here this year is because of Amanda doing promotional posters for Third Friday. This sounds very self-congratulatory. I'm sorry, I can't help it. You may have seen my posters in businesses. It's because of Amanda. I was promoting Third Friday. I got a lot of traffic from that, from businesses that I would not have had an opportunity to show my work in front of. And so I started a business here in Ottawa because of that. Second point, I'm going to make this very quickly.
Closing down a truck route multiple times to hold an event, which can certainly be held somewhere else. Who else will not speak next?
Could I ask what the truck, the truck route is?
It's emergency vehicles.
Yeah, we have. You know what? Chief Wilson, would you like to come up and comment?
Well, just a little.
No, you know that.
Just a couple things. Obviously, like Mayor Austin said, this isn't about the cancellation of Amanda's event, obviously. We did sit down several times, and we discussed the fact of closing it one time, not six times. It kind of speaks to the whole thing that Amanda brought up about the 10 closures per year, if that were the case, and trying to make it fair for everyone, and trying to work with everyone on that. We did offer the one closure, if, am I correct? Okay, Madison Street, Main Street, and Boys are the truck routes. So unfortunately, there is truck traffic that goes through there, and that's what Mayor Austin's talking about. It does raise a concern for emergency services, closing streets, any kind of closures. The parking lanes obviously are a concern. We try to compromise and make that work for your events, and then get one big event at the end. That doesn't seem to be the case, and that wasn't satisfactory to you. I don't really know how to solve this, other than if you chose six events and we chose to limit it to 10. I don't know who, how we determine who comes. You can't really go, I'm going to go first or second, or whatever the case is. We want to make it fair as much as possible. The two venues that were suggested are the ones that the city had invested in, a lot of different amenities for that. I don't make those choices when it comes to electricity or any other place. Because even if the roadways open, is a concern regardless. Those are for traffic purposes. It's not necessarily... And the reason we did that initially, and this was a discussion, because quite honestly, it was a debate initially when this took place, because of the pandemic, was trying to make the small businesses get money and get people down there and make it workable. And so that was never the intent, as I recall, at least in any of the conversations I had of closing out the streets on a permanent basis, that wasn't the intent. I understand your concern. No one spoke against the event. No one doesn't want, no one wants to see it go away. But what we're asking for is a compromise. We did offer, like I said, the parking lanes, which you said the artists were concerned about. I understand that. But we did offer the one closure, like what we allow for cruise night and other events downtown, not to occupy six Fridays.
If Main Street is a truck route, what is the problem? I mean, they're right next to each other. Why couldn't a truck just take Main Street instead of Madison?
No, they could. I realize that. I understand that. Not Jefferson Street, because it's not a truck problem. It's not closed for that way. So that's where the concern was at. But you are altering traffic for six events.
By like 15 seconds of rerouting? I mean, it's not, it's not like Main Street is on the other side of town. It's right next to Madison Street. They run parallel.
I realize that. I understand that.
We're also talking about four hours one night a month. And you know how the businesses from Ottawa here, they're talking about economic gain. You're talking about restaurants.
Sir, you need to come up to the microphone and speak.
Well, you know what? I got something to put in there. Thank you. So what I was going to come up and say at first was, I'm a customer. I go to every one of them. It's awesome. And I think everybody here agrees to that. But I do work in Utica. Utica, I work it out. It's so vibrant. I've been there for 13 years. The village there does take it very serious for all the small businesses to make money. And what they did for the emergency vehicles was, they measured for a vehicle to get right down Mill Street, and it worked. And all our vendors and everybody has to stay on the side. So what they have is, they had the fire chief come down, and they measured for an emergency vehicle to get right down that lane. You know, and for as many events as Amanda wants to have, I think for a couple hours, we could reroute some trucks and make a pathway in the middle and make sure, you know, it's for walking, but if an emergency vehicle likes to go down it, at least, you know, Utica, what they do is they actually tape it on the street. Nobody can put any kind of chairs or, you know, it can only be for walking because you do have to leave it open, and they realize that, too.
What's your name, please?
Dana Stillwell.
Thanks.
That's all I got, and I hope you guys change your minds.
My name is John Fisher-Gan. I own City Folk. I'm in La Salle. Together with Francie Stofflink, we support, we began with Amanda. It was the person that started all. We started the first Third Fridays before it was on Madison Street. I think what we need to realize tonight is, besides just the artists, it has supported all of downtown Ottawa. We've heard from the culinary arts. We also, I know from day one, I've hired musicians to perform in my store for these events. It's not only just artists. It's not only just our stores. It's the community. We are talking about three to four hours one night a month. With another route that is one block away, it's just, you need to understand, it's hard for us to understand why this is such a problem. If the emergency vehicles and the trucks, and I can't imagine how many trucks are going down four hours one night a month on a Friday night when most truckers are going to be home with their families, that this is such a problem that needs to be shown to all of us because it's just hard for us to understand. So the reason we are all out here tonight is because Amanda has started this from the very beginning, before Madison Street, with her own blood, sweat, and tears, is something for Ottawa. And if four truckers on a Friday night can't go a block away, how are we supposed to understand?
But you must get... But you're, must get through a lot of it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, how many other streets should we allow to be closed?
How many ever was there?
That's true, and if we're going to go there, then let's start, I understand.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, we had problems last year with people that wanted to do car shows and close down a block of Madison Street, a block of Clinton Street, and we said, no.
Do they have the same economic impact that we have to the city?
That, that's no impact to the city. People are calling up and they're saying, can we close down a street to do an event?
Can they prove the same impact that you're seeing tonight? No, no, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I'm saying, do they have the same economic impact?
They haven't been allowed to do it. And what I'm asking you is, if we're going to open up this Pandora's Box, how many streets do we get to, how many should we shut down every week?
Why isn't a Pandora's Box, can you set some rules that if it hasn't?
We did set rules, you can have one event a year, you can operate on a one-way street, you can go on parks.
Well, we've obviously had more than one night a year the last couple of years, and I realized that was during the pandemic.
Yeah.
But this has proven a great event for Ottawa, is what we're trying to say.
Absolutely. No one ever said it wasn't a great event.
Okay. And we have car shows here already.
Yep.
And they are doing the same thing for Ottawa that we're seeing tonight.
I don't know what you mean by doing the same thing for Ottawa.
Is anyone here saying, okay, everyone tonight has said we have car shows, those people aren't coming in my store, they're right in front of my store, they're coming and using the bathroom, they aren't buying anything. I have provable receipts from everyone that's here tonight, not only what I've sold, but the people that are in my store when it began, I used to have artists in there that were selling their things, they, and the people that I hired to perform as artists, to play music, the food trucks that we've hired to be on the food trucks, is another thing, we will talk about that. But the culinary arts, this is not just one impact, it's not just car people coming in for a night.
It's closing down a street.
That's true. But I think what we're saying is, we don't understand what, why that's such a big deal.
Nor do we understand why it's not such a big deal. Why don't you have your thing on Jackson Street, Court Street, Washington Park?
Because we don't have the same economic impact to our stores that we have at those places.
Events on Jordan Block and, events in Washington Park do not help Madison Street businesses. I've worked in Madison Street businesses.
Well, you know what, we're getting close to the limit here, everybody's just saying the same thing. Thanks for everyone.
No, I just want to say one last thing. I know you guys said that the event is very important to you, and I think that everyone appreciates that you're saying that you recognize that it's an important event. And I think that's important, that we all hear that. So it's important to understand, if it's not in the street, the event doesn't exist.
Well, I've, I've seen Amanda.
So Third Friday is a street event, so if it can't be on the street, the event is done, it's over and the event is now killed.
We close it down on Jackson Street too, for Court Street and all the other bars that keep on closing streets down too?
Jackson Street and Court Street are one-way streets and you can't close them down for an event? Huh?
They're all muppets. Muppets is a two-way street and they have trucks arriving down that and they close them down at least three or four times a year for the summer.
I don't think for the summer. Well, listen, this is why this all came to a head and we set the rules in place. You can close one-way streets, or you can close a two-way street for one event. You can use all the other spaces the city has that has electricity, has garbage cans, has picnic tables, it's set up for these, it's got wifi. I want to thank everyone for coming, it was good to hear from everybody. 13 months.
I'd like to just be right behind for a minute.
You need to go to the podium, sir.
I understand we're sometimes, in a community, you have just some rules and regulations and things like that, especially if something about streets and safety concerns and all that sort of thing. But what I, what I would like to see is the turnout in the unions is very high, that this is a very positive sort of event for many different levels, is that some consideration, you know, all rules are always meant to have a little waiver in them for this and that. This event has been going on for like three years. Maybe even their grandfather clause for an event because it's going on as many years, you know, we'll make an exception for this. New businesses, well, that might follow the rules and regulations that have been put in place. And all rules and regulations never last for a thousand years, they last for as long as they work. So I just want to bring that up to the point of consideration.
Can we have your name for the record, sir?
Oh, Bill Pan.
Thanks.
Can I say something? Can I speak?
Sure.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to everybody seated and standing who like obviously cares a lot about this town, you know? That's something that we are really all unified over, you know, is like the health and wellbeing of the community and of each of the individuals. So I'm really glad to see everybody's faces and, you know, I also think that, like as you said, we probably don't have a full understanding of all the emergency protocols and I imagine that maybe you don't have as much of an understanding of the impact it means to these businesses. I can say, I don't own a shop downtown, but I've witnessed them so passionately fight for it happening in this, in this place, in this specific place in town. And you guys have all, who do have shops, like, I think you would not be fighting for this if it didn't make a difference, you know, like if it could really just happen anywhere. And I, because I know that the artisans and the business owners like just want to see community, isn't, you know, I don't mean, I don't mean to throw ourselves on this bus, but maybe that isn't, if that's not the ideal solution, like Madison Street really isn't the best place and there is a solution that like would bring revenue to the downtown businesses that, like, again, I don't, I'm not a stakeholder and it's like, I don't have, like, so maybe I shouldn't be the ones saying that, but I think what we, really what we want is to find a solution that makes sense for the residents, you know, obviously makes sense for the people getting transported in an emergency, you know, like situation. We want them to be well and we want the business owners and the creators to thrive and have, you know, economic support. So like how, what could we do that would accomplish the best of all those things? And are, these are only two options, and if they are, how could we think creatively to, so that it wouldn't negatively impact any of these situations?
I have one more thing to say, this market has been a gift that Amanda has wrapped up in a beautiful present to give to our community. This is something that she throws herself into in her entirety, she doesn't do it to profit, it's an extension of the art community that she's created in her business. It only makes sense for it to be in front of her business. I've seen her running around this market, I'm her neighbor, I watched her sun while she sets it up. We help each other, musicians plug in the music in my shop, we all work together to support this and if it was anywhere else, it wouldn't be that community of support that it is. That's all I want to say.
All right, thank you. All right, thanks everyone, we do have the rest of the city council meeting to take care of.
So is this the final answer then? Like, or do we meet on this? So is it like a no?
There was no.
Like, this is a meeting and agenda, so does this come up on the next meeting? Is it proposed for more discussion?
I mean, we'll discuss and take a look at all the signatures and talk amongst the staff, but there's no motion to change the decision or change the rules or start allowing it. Yeah, it came out of the pandemic and we let people close streets and we closed streets for the bars and the restaurants and we did all of that.
This isn't a restaurant.
I'm just saying.
We'll be meeting with Amanda anyhow because she does have an open request, so we do have to come up with a solution to help with that. So, but that's something that we'll work on, so that, there's not really an agenda, okay?
How does some motioning process work? Does a motioning come from a council member or do you have to like submit a request and pay? I don't know, I haven't checked very recently.
No, if, when you came in, there should have been agendas up there, it lists everything that's on the agenda. It has to be on the agenda to be discussed and voted upon. Sometimes we place things on file for people to review for two weeks and we go on at the next meeting.
So how do you get something on the agenda? How do you get something on the agenda?
Well, if you're a commissioner, you can put it on the agenda, if you're a mayor, you can put it on the agenda. What do you want to put on the agenda?
A vote for this? Okay.
No, you don't get to vote on this, I'm sorry. Right, and there's...
We pay the elected officials of the city as taxpayers.
You need to come in and speak at the microphone.
We are the taxpayers of the city. Like I said, we pay elected officials 30 salaries every year. I think that almost 5,000 signatures that have been put on this petition shows enough that people of this community have spoken what we want.
We set up what is needed and what we're going to allow.
This event costs very little, if any.
But we do have an awful lot of work to run the entire city and the rest of this agenda is, has to be taken care of tonight.
That doesn't resolve anything. This needs to be voted on as community, if our community feels we get ahead there, then that's how it should be taken, that's how we should create our angle. Is that, does anybody else agree?
Sir, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way, it has to be on the agenda, put on by the commissioner.
For our next...
We are, we are going to meet with Amanda, work through this. That's what I can say, okay? We do have an open request, we do have to respond, they don't get their resolution.
There can be a red line.
They're fine, yes.
All right, we're going to move to Commissioner Eichelkraut's portion of the agenda.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut that the bi-weekly salary payroll of February 18th, 2022, in the amount of $451,766, be approved and warrants issued.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Les, roll call please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut that the monthly expense report of March 1st, 2022, showing expenses in the amount of $642,321.99, be approved and warrants issued.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Les, roll call please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut that the city clerk be authorized to advertise for bids for the new NCAP bus shelter. Bids will be received until Thursday, March 24th, 2022, at 10 o'clock AM at City Hall.
Sir, a second.
Second. Second.
Commissioner Gainer, roll call please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut that a resolution authorizing execution and amendment of the Section 5311 grant agreement for fiscal year 2023 for NCAP be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Sir, a second. Commissioner Pearson, roll call please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut that an ordinance providing public transportation in the city of Ottawa, LaSalle County, Illinois be passed and approved.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Gainer, roll call please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Eichelkraut that a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to the state capital grant agreement between the city of Ottawa and the Illinois Department of Transportation regarding NCAP be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Sir, a second. Commissioner Pearson, any discussion? Roll call please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Do you have anything else, Commissioner Eichelkraut? Uh, no, I don't, sir. We'll move to Commissioner Gainer's agenda.
Move by Commissioner Gainer that a resolution to enter into an agreement for application, administration, and coordination services for a building loan fund project between the city of Ottawa and NCICG, which has been on file for public inspection since February 15th, 2022, be adopted.
Sir, a second. Commissioner Pearson, any discussion?
This is just an application to help get us a grant for our annual water main replacement.
Roll call please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Do you have anything else, Commissioner Gainer?
Not at this time.
We'll move to Commissioner Pearson's agenda.
Move by Commissioner Pearson that a resolution authorizing execution of a proposal for professional engineering services with Chamblin and Associates Incorporated for the IDCC satellite building, which has been on file for public inspection since February 15th, 2022, be adopted.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Eichelkraut, any discussion? Roll call please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Pearson that a resolution requesting permission from the Illinois Department of Transportation to temporarily close certain portions of Route 23 on Saturday, May 14th, 2022, from 5:30 AM until 9 o'clock AM, and certain other portions from 5:30 AM until 2 o'clock PM, for the annual Run Star Rock Country Run Marathon be adopted.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Gainer, any discussion? Roll call please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Pearson that a resolution authorizing acceptance and execution of a service order with Verizon Connect for vehicle empowered asset tracking subscriptions be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gainer, any discussion? Roll call please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Pearson that the quote receivables, Benell Industries, for a 2022 Ford F-550 dump truck with a Snowfighter package in the amount of $111,420 be approved and paid for from the General Corporate Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Eichelkraut, roll call please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Do you have anything else for the council commissioner? We'll move to Commissioner Les.
We have the report of the police chief for the month of February, squad card calls 1,430, arrest 411, prisoners 68, sent to state institution zero, sent to county jail 21, sent to juvenile probation seven. Central dispatch handled 897 911 calls and they also handled 3,829 administrative calls. Move by Commissioner Les that the report of police chief, Brian A. Wilson, for the month of February 2022, be received and placed on file.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gainer.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Aye.
We had the report of the fire chief for the month of February. Number of bell alarms, one. Number of still alarms, 21. Activated alarms, 28. Number of medic calls, 268. Number of transfers, zero. Mutual aid, seven. Number of patients, 188. Total calls for February, 318. Structure loss, contents loss, and vehicle loss was all at zero for February. Total on residence billed for medical services, 23. Move by Commissioner Les that the report of fire chief, Andrew Brockowski, for the month of February 2022, be received and placed on file.
Sir, a second. Commissioner Pearson, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gaynor.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Les that the quote from Keesler Police Supply in the amount of $28,674, excuse me, $674.84 for firearms for the police department be approved and paid for from the General Corporate Fund.
Sir, a second. Second. Commissioner Gaynor, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gaynor.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Commissioner Les that a resolution authorizing the execution of a master service agreement between the city of Ottawa and Lexington regarding the fire department be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Eichelkraut, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gaynor.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Do you have anything else, Commissioner Les?
Nothing further this evening, sir, thank you.
All right, we'll move to the mayor's agenda.
We had the report of the registrar, there were 38 birth certificates issued and 35 death certificates for February. Certified copies were issued with fees totaling $3,644. Move by Mayor Ossen that the report of registrar, Shelley L. Monks, for the month of February 2022, be received and placed on file.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Les, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gaynor.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Move by Mayor Ossen that the report of the parking administration department showing fines collected of $1,340 for the month of February 2022 be received and placed on file.
Sir, a second. Second. Commissioner Gaynor, roll call, please.
Eichelkraut.
Aye.
Gaynor.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
We have the report of the building official for the month of February. There were two building permits issued with fees totaling $440. Total on more onsite building inspections, 19. There were three demolition permits for $275, one fence permit for $50, 34 general contractor licenses issued for $3,400. Our plumbing inspector did a total of 10 inspections. There were 545 electrical licenses issued, nine electrical permits for $800. We had 12 people take our electrical exam for $1,800. Our electrical inspector did a total of 30 inspections, our construction coordinator did a total of 19 inspections, and our code enforcement officer did a total of 72 inspections, for a total of permits and licenses of 40 with fees collected as $4,165. Move by Mayor Ossen that the report of building official, Matthew W. Stafford, for the month of February 2022, be received and placed on file.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call, please.